All right, welcome all. I'd like to call to order the Fridley Public School Board meeting for November 20th. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda for the board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Sampson, seconded by Prueado, to approve the agenda for November 20th. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the motion passes. Next up, Dr. Heil, the spotlight on recognition and gifts.
Thank you. Good evening Chair Riddle and our school board members. I am honored tonight to share with you our school board, excuse me, our Employee of the Month for November of 2018. So congratulations to Priyanka Ray, who's our Employee of the Month for November. We have been so fortunate to have Priyanka Ray as both a dedicated employee and a parent in our district. She worked in our early childhood program as a para and now as a media clerk at Stevenson Elementary. She has a positive attitude every day and has met all the challenges that have come her way. She is caring, open-minded, and always ready to help out. Not only does she work and parent in our district, but she consistently volunteers as well. Including over this past summer vacation, she worked with a challenge math group. We're lucky to have Priyanka as a member of our team and we congratulate her on the honor of being the November Employee of the Month.
Thank you. I'm gonna throw in a couple of quick plugs also myself that are not on the agenda item. I would like to just send our congratulations out to all the high school students and staff that worked on the successful run of Shrek the Musical, recently done at the high school auditorium. Very well attended and well put on performances. And then I'd also like to also congratulate Ellie Gunderson. She's of the Fridley Totino Grace Swim and Dive Team. She recently competed in and actually is a state champion diver. So congratulations goes out to Ellie.
Great. I believe it was a close race. Is that correct?
It was very close, yes. It came down to the final dive and I believe she won by about four points total. So and actually she was in second place going into the final dive, so.
With that, we'll move on to superintendent and staff reports, beginning with the World's Best Workforce, Ms. Oftedall.
Board Vice Chair Riddle, board members, Superintendent Heil, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to share this presentation. This is really an overview of last year, 2017, 2018, our World's Best Workforce Goals and our achievement and integration goals and progress. The World's Best Workforce Goals, of course, are mandated from the Department of Education. In statute are these five areas. They do encompass our preschool all the way through to our graduation and beyond. Kindergarten readiness, making sure all students are ready for kindergarten. Read Well by Grade Three, making sure all students are reading at grade level by the end of third grade. Reducing our achievement gaps, identifying where student achievement opportunities gaps are the largest and working strategically to close those. College and career readiness, making sure that all of our students are prepared for their post-secondary lives. And high school graduation, making sure that all of our students are completing their matriculation through high school and giving them those opportunities to graduate for as many, for however long that it takes them to do that. Sometimes it's four years, sometimes it's five, and sometimes it's seven. And making sure that all students are on that unique pathway to holding that high school diploma. Our kindergarten readiness, last year we really focused on our four-year-old preschool, identifying letter sounds is a pre-kindergarten phonemic awareness skill. Our goal was to have 68.5% of our students meeting that goal by the end of their four-year-old preschool. Unfortunately, we did not meet that goal. However, we made great strides in increasing the number of students and the comprehensive assessments that we had those students do, focusing on our curriculum and doing some alignment. We did have 59.5, about 60%, of our students when they left four-year-old preschool able to hit that fall kindergarten benchmark. In our Read Well by Grade Three, we used the A-reading from Fastbridge. It was our first year in using that assessment. Our goal was to have 40% of our students hit that MCA predictive success mark. We had actually 45% of our students in grade three who met that benchmark and resulted in about 46% of our students in grade three meeting standards or exceeding standards on the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment. And so we found that to be a really good predictive assessment for us. Reducing the achievement gap, in our district, we use the MCA for our achievement gap data and we found that our greatest achievement opportunity gap is with our students eligible for free and reduced lunch and our students not eligible for free and reduced lunch. Our goal was to reduce our achievement gap to 25.5%. We did not see those results in that and actually saw a decline with a 27.4% gap continuing in reading. In math, our goal was to reduce the gap to 26.5% and we actually saw an increase in the gap in mathematics. We're hoping that this year, one of our progress pieces is the implementation of math intervention coaches and increasing the number of students who received small group math intervention. We have one math intervention, Do the Math, that we have trained not only our special ed teachers but also our math coaches and we're using that consistently in all grades in elementary and in the middle school for our student intervention and we're really looking forward to seeing some results on that and including the math intervention in our win time as well. And so hopefully seeing some changes in that. This is also the first year that we'll be implementing balanced math instruction in many of our elementary classrooms, which allows for large group lessons for students but then allows for independent work time using some technology and other independent skills so students can work at whatever their instructional level is and then giving the teacher opportunities to work with small groups with like skills in order to grow students in all areas and so. Yes?
Is that, like I know in the Read Well is by grade three, a one year or one grade level assessment? Is that a one grade level assessment or across the entire?
It's across the entire district. And so the reading goal is all students in grades three through 10 and the math goal is all students in grades three through 11.
Okay. Thank you.
Great question.
It was.
Because I know in the past, the MCA was just specifically, I believe, eighth grade, as I recall.
Yep. And the Read Well by Grade Three is only third grade, but the achievement gap crosses over all of the students who take the MCA. The reduced achievement gap is also the same goal that we use for our Achievement Integration Plan. Our college and career readiness, we focus on the ACT. We give every 11th grader the opportunity to take the ACT in school during the school day at no cost to them. And the idea is that every student should have that experience of what that college readiness level of reading is. And we use the reading test specifically for the measurement for this college and career readiness. We have just a great participation for all of our students, whether students are planning to go on to higher education, whether they're going to a four-year university, whether they're going to a two-year school, whether they're going on to other types of trades or career training, or going on to the military, or going directly into the workforce. We believe that that level of reading skill is necessary for their success regardless of what choices they, that they have on their plates. Our goal was to have 30% of our students hit that college benchmark. We had 33% of our students who hit that college benchmark. Our high school continues to focus specifically on giving students experiences with using the ACT reading, content preps in different content areas, science, individuals and societies, in history, in language arts, and in mathematics. And hopefully they, that the practice in all those different areas will improve their skills on when they do take that test in all areas. The high school also has been working very hard at looking for their building goals, not just on increasing the overall achievement, but they're working on reducing that gap for free and reduced lunch students and students not eligible for free and reduced lunch. And so they continue to see growth, not only for students not on free and reduced lunch, those skills, scores continue to go up on the ACT reading and in the ACT math, but also for students on free and reduced lunch. Those skills continue to grow as well. So their gap is decreasing significantly.
Does this include a writing component as well to the ACT?
These scores only are related to the reading. We don't have the, we don't include the writing scores in those. We do have the math, we have the science, we have the English and the, and the reading ones.
Thank you.
So I think really that focus on college and career readiness is an overall goal and focus for the high school as well. The high school graduation rate, last year we had an 85% graduation rate. We wanted to grow that to 88%, almost 89%. Overall, in the district, we did not achieve that. It was 81%. However, we did achieve the 85% with the Fridley High School and this is students who are graduating with their four-year cohort. What we do know is, is that when we think about the numbers of students who are continuing, so if we had 85% of our high school students who were graduating with their four-year cohort, we did have approximately 23, or about 25 students who were enrolled in continuing after that. And so we know that our dropout rate is incredibly low. It's about 4%, which at our high school is four students. So that, that's really commendable. They had no students that were unknown, so we knew exactly where every student was going. And we had about 23 students who went on to the ALC or to continue on to get their high school diploma. So that graduation rate continues to be something that, that we should really continue to celebrate, especially at our high school. Our ALC graduation rate for four-year cohort is incredibly low. However, for the five-year and their seven-year cohort, almost all of their students graduate within that time, who stay with them during that time. And so that really says that our alternative learner, our area learning center is offering that alternative education, that individualized plan, that really meets the needs of students who need something different from a regular four-year high school experience. And they're really reaching out to meet those needs. And so although the numbers don't tell that whole story, I really like to share that story because I think having the opportunity within our district for students to continue on and to know that that, that pathway is there for them, that we can continue to support those students, and that we really do take a lot of effort to make sure that we're doing everything we can to reduce the number of students who literally drop out and have no opportunity to get their edu, to get that high school diploma. So there's a lot of things to celebrate with that. Our Achievement Integration Plan, the goals of Achievement Integration are really to pursue that racial and economic integration through the use of the Magnet School Programs, of which the International Baccalaureate offers students across the seven district, seven district collaborative to participate and do that voluntary integration. We want to increase student achievement overall and we do that by offering that very rigorous program of the International Baccalaureate. Create equitable educational opportunities. We are a continuum district that offers students in the IB full participation without any barriers. And so students are able to participate in all programs from the pre-K, PYP, all the way to the diploma program without any gatekeeping. And hopefully we can continue to reduce our academic disparities as well. The two goals that we had for Achievement Integration, this is our 2017 to our 2020 plan, was the reduction in the achievement gap using the MCAs for reading and math. As I said before, we did not see significant reductions in those gaps. However, one of our other integration goals was to maintain the IB Magnet School enrollment. Our four-year average is 320 students. We exceeded that with 362 students. And so we continue to offer those opportunities for students through Achievement and Integration. One of the other goals that we had was really to reduce the disproportionality of suspensions between our students who are African-American students and our white students. Our goal really was to reduce it to 28.2%. We really wanted to reduce that disproportionality. We did not see those, that growth and that reduction at all in that disproportionality and that continues to be a focus area for all of our buildings. The buildings continue to look at that data on a regular basis and we continue to look at our policies or practices and thinking about how do we create that culturally responsive as well as equitable environment for students in order to see those changes in ourselves and how we're responding to students. We did see an overall decline in suspensions, but we did not see that same results in the Those then wrap up our World's Best Workforce and our Achievement Integration Report. The report with this detail will be published on the district website. If anyone has questions, they certainly can contact me via email or by phone. Be happy to share any additional data, questions that they would have. The full report will be published and submitted to the Department of Education. Any questions? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Riddle.
Next up, we have a Legislative Platform for Fridley Public Schools, Ms. McLemore. Wherever you would like, if you'd like to sit there. Your name tag is over there. If you'd like to sit there, that's fine, or if you want to use the podium, I think
Thank you Board Chair Riddle, board members, and Superintendent Dr. Heil. Today we present the School District's 2019 Legislative Platform, which is really a statement of the school district's priorities in terms of legislative issues that we engage our legislators every year. This is a statement that once we produce it every year, we communicate this to our community, we post it on our school website, and it becomes talking points that should we have the opportunity to engage our legislators, we begin to have discussions about funding priorities for the school districts that are not that many, that are not that very different from what other school districts are also advocating for. So for our school district, being a low property wealth school district, we still continue to prioritize tax relief and reform as well as increase in basic formula because those are key issues that the organizations that the school districts is a partner with, Schools in Equity for Education and Association of Metropolitan School District, continue to advocate for change. For our community that has low property wealth, there is a huge tax burden on our property owners because that's where the base that we typically go to when we need operational support for funding. And over time, that can be very expensive. There is inequity in how that funding is being distributed to schools. So when we look at C, for example, that has more than 35 school districts, both in the metro area and rural communities, we are all struggling with the same issue. So for many years, they, these advocacy groups have campaigned really hard. They have done their research, they do studies, they engage school districts in terms of just trying to understand where the support need to come from in terms of making sure that all students, regardless of where they live, regardless of their zip codes, have the same opportunities to be successful in terms of resource allocations to their schools. Basic formula is another issue that over time has been increased but has not kept up with inflation. So while we do get it, it could be a 1%, it could be a 1.5%. The increase may result in funding, additional funding, that does not still meet the needs that we have because it, you know, inflation, inflation is not factored into that. An increase of 5% will go a long way for our school district. That may represent almost for 3,000 students, an equivalent of an additional funding of half a million, when the deficit may very well be three-quarters of a million. So even though the funding helps, it still doesn't cover the needs of our school district. Special education is another item that most of our school districts continue to struggle with. We have state mandates that we have to, to meet requirements, that we have to provide support services that our students with special ed, special needs need. However, the funding that we do get results in school districts having to spend additional money just to need that resulting in something that is commonly called a cross-subsidy. For our school district, ours last year was $2 million. So we are still able to provide those services for our children with special needs. However, the funding is not enough. So if, if, if it's something that legislatively can be addressed, this is something that we continue to advocate for. It's been part of our priorities for a number of years. The basic formula at the same time has been on our agenda for many years. It's no different from what other school districts are campaigning and advocating for. We publish this information on our website and we encourage community members who are interested in being an active voice in support of our schools and our school district to contact us. There's a number that is published there as well. They can reach out to us and we can provide more information. As the legislative session begins, there is always opportunity for school community members to be able to be more involved, to visit the state Capitol and just be a presence and be a voice and advocate for these changes that we need. Anyone that is interested in being involved in that is more than welcome. We welcome all voices, the more the better. And that information will be available on our website probably tomorrow.
And this is an actual funding year, budget funding year by the state legislature, so it's maybe more important this year than it would be in the off-years. Is that correct?
Yes. And also keeping in mind that we have new elected officials this coming session, so there is a lot of hope that we may continue to see the positive changes that people have really worked hard to articulate and to present. So the more voices that are there that are vocal, seeking support for our students, the better.
I have a question. So the legislative, legislative platform that's going to be on the website is one which was crafted by your department, is that correct, specifically for our school district?
Yes. The process, the process that we use is really, we try to mirror what Schools in Equity and the Association of Metropolitan School District is doing. Because there are so many, as you know, different school districts in the country, I mean, in Minnesota. If each one of us had something that was different, it would be very difficult to represent each one of those voices. So what they do is they study what is going on in each school district, they do their research, and they engage their member school district in terms of what their priorities are. By the time they summarize that, they may each have a document that may include six or seven or even 10 priorities. So what may be relevant for us and a high priority for us may not be the same thing that is relevant and a high priority for a diner. But across the board, the funding formula is something that all school districts support because we know that their inequity is in that. We are not one of the top 25 school districts that can access levy dollars without voter approval. Some of them are able to do that for some projects. We are not one of those. And I think the disadvantage that the Fridley community has is just the fact that we don't have too many commercial properties here to create a buffer for our homeowners. So typically, when we do go to the community and ask for funding, they have to bear the brunt of majority of what we are, we are asking for funding. And also just being sensitive to who our community members are, you can't go to your community members and ask for something that you know that is not reasonable and they cannot support it. For example, three years ago, when we did a levy, we knew the need was almost $58 million. However, after engaging our community and getting feedback from them, we knew what they were comfortable supporting was half of that. So that's what half, that's what we asked for and those are the projects that we just completed this year. However, the need is still there and we understand that. So what is it that we can do as a school district and as staff members to try and alleviate some of that burden for them? We continue to advocate and we continue to have membership into these groups that we know work tirelessly for that as well. So we look at that together with our finance department because changes may have happened the year before where what priority may be relevant for someone else is not relevant for us. However, C and AMSD make sure that they have incorporated the top percent of concerns that they know that their member districts are facing. So for us, it continues to be that tax relief and just additional increase in the basic formula.
The reason for my question, and I wanted to thank you for putting the, this together because I think it's a very well-written, articulate document and where in the past we haven't necessarily had this. As you said, we have just been a part of either the C platform or AMSD. So this is a very helpful document for our community members as well as for our legislators. We meet with them and talk with them about our priorities, but this is something that really they can have in their hand and take with them to really understand well our needs. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll move on to business action item, beginning with a resolution for accepting gifts. Every month, we're fortunate to receive gifts from the community surrounding Fridley Public Schools. And as a board, we'd like to acknowledge them and accept those gifts. This month, for the public schools, except with appreciation, the following gifts received by the school district. Donating to Stevenson Elementary School for a total of $60 was Leah Likness. Donating to Hayes Elementary for a total of $328.60, Deanna Roth, an anonymous donor, and Nancy Anderson and Margene Swanson, both Hayes alumnis, who donated jackets, hats, snow pants, underwear, and leggings and pants for those students. Donating to Fridley Middle School for a total of $60 was Leah Likness. And at the high school, they received a total of $1,000 from the Fridley Columbia Heights Rotary for the MTSS gift grid store and Alina Health for the reading program that's run by Ms. Thompson. Donating to the Fridley preschool program, St. Philip's Lutheran Church donated two dozen hand-sewn mittens and hats. With that, do I have a motion to accept these gifts and thank the donors for their contributions?
Move the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion by Sampson, seconded by Stark, to accept the gifts and thank the donors for their contributions. As a resolution, clerk, could please call the roll.
Ms. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Sampson?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
And the resolution passes. Next up, we have a motion and a second reading and adoption of policies. Dr. Heil.
Thank you. This evening, we're asking for approval for Policy 802, which is Disposition of Obsolet Equipment and Material, as well as Policy 805, which is for Waste Reduction and Recycling. There are no changes to these policies since our first reading in October, so we are asking for approval to approve these policies.
And then Ms. Klassman, I believe we have two additional policies for second reading up that I fall into your basket.
Thank you Vice Chair Riddle, school board members, Dr. Heil. I am also presenting two policies for second reading tonight and asking that they be approved as well. Policy 722 did incorporate the modifications that you had requested at the last meeting.
I move we accept the policies that are presented for the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion by Sampson, seconded by Prueado, to accept the second reading and adoption of Policies 802, 805, 722, and 515.1. Any further discussion? Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you. Next up, we have a resolution establishing a combined polling place for the multiple precincts. Dr. Heil.
Thank you Vice Chair Riddle. This evening, we're asking approval from the board for an annual requirement that we need to do if it's ever necessary to hold a special election, that this special election will be held at Fridley Community Center.
Move the resolution. Second.
Motion to approve the resolution establishing the combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating those hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections that are not held on the same day as a statewide county or municipal election, and that would be at the Fridley Community Center. Any further discussion?
Yeah, that's what I said.
Well, it wasn't written here, so I just wanted to.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor, or excuse me, resolutions, can you please roll the call?
Ms. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Sampson?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
And the resolution passes. Thank you. Final business action item is a consent agenda, which includes the regular minutes of the school board meeting and work session that were held on October 18th, the monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leaves of absences, termination, resignations, and retirements, the approval of the annual 2018, 2019 World Best Workforce Plan, as well as approval or request for approval of a Historical Society trip to northern Minnesota during April of 2019. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Sampson, seconded by Stark, to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next up is the reports from school board members, the Association of Metropolitan School District's board meeting that was held on November 2nd. Dr. Heil.
Thank you. At our AMSD event, we had presentations. ASMD gave a Friend of Public Educational War to two senators. Those senators who received the wars were Senators Sandy Pappas as well as Senator Julie Rosen. At the ASMD meeting as well, there were two presentations given, one by Lucy Payne and Alex Luizzi. Alex Luizzi, and they both discussed updates on the status of the new Pelsby program. The second presentation was from Kevin Rup, who presented information on Janus and the fair share fees and our requested leave of absence. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, a little item that I jumped over, the written information, starting with student enrollment. Let's go back to the important stuff, student enrollment.
You have me flipping my paper here.
He's keeping you on your toes, isn't he?
Yes, yes. So thank you. Just our update for our enrollment for the month of November. We had a slight increase. We were up about seven students, and we're currently about approximately 2,900 students here in the district.
Thank you. Now, we have first reading of several policies. Ms. Glassman, I want to get in your extra steps to come back and...
It's good for all of us. Thank you, Vice Chair Riddle, School Board members, Dr. Hile. I am presenting with one really minor and small change on Board Policy 501, and it's really a, comes in terms of if there's special requests that are made under that policy to have them go to one individual instead of different building administrators or program administrators. So really sticking with our theme of consistency. So that is the one change that's presented to the board tonight.
And that was Policy 501, the school weapons policy?
Correct.
Thank you. Dr. Hile, you have a number of first readings.
Thank you. Thank you. So for first reading, we have Policy 504, which addresses student dress and appearance. We have a couple of changes on that. We removed detailed description of inappropriate wear, because it was already covered in other definitions as found under letter C, C1. We also removed procedures from the policy and made that a separate document. Our next procedure, 506, on student discipline for our first reading, we added the term electronic cigarettes to under inappropriate behavior with the other named tobacco products. So that was, that is there as well. Thank you.
And then first reading of Policy 505, Distribution of Materials. Ms. McLemore, as well as 505P, I guess you have both a policy and a procedure.
Board Chair Riddle, Board members, Superintendent Dr. Hile, Policy 505, Distribution of Materials on School Property or at School Events pertains particularly to staff and students. We have another policy, Policy 904, which is the same policy but specifically is concerned with non-school staff. What we have done with this policy this time is to align it with the previous policy that was approved by the board early this year, to make sure that the language is consistent. What we are requiring of our community members is the same information that we are requiring of our students. So some of the changes that are in here is the additional language that touches on items considered when requests are presented, and this language is now aligned with Policy 904. The procedural part of it has been removed to 504P, so that it provides more clear definition of what that process looks like. And an additional item under guidelines in Item 8 is aligned with board priorities and mission of the district. So what that clarifies is when requests are presented for distribution, whoever is approving that needs to make sure that the information that is being presented aligns with our school board mission, aligns with our priorities, and the work that we are doing here in the district. So this is presented to you today for first reading.
Right, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is important future school board dates. One of the items that was part of the consent agenda was resignations, and we accepted the resignation of Ms. Sampson. She will be leaving us at the end of December. So with that, obviously, we will have a board vacancy. We plan to fill that as statute allows us by appointment. So we are asking anyone that would be interested to actually apply for the position of a school board. You will go to our website, you will find the application available there. Please fill that, anybody that would be interested certainly can fill that out. The dates that will be open will be basically starting November 20th to December 7th. So at that point in time, we will be reviewing all of those applications and bringing folks in for interviews to bring them aboard as a member of the school board. This is a one-year appointment, as the seat is up for reelection in November of 2019. So for those that were interested in potentially being part of the school board, certainly would recommend calling in. You can certainly contact any of the members of the school board, or Ms. McLemore, or Ms. Glassman with the school district for that. Also, updates here for next Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board. That meeting will be held November 28th, 2018, at 6:15. It actually has a changed date that we made at their most recent meeting, as we found the day before Thanksgiving was probably not a good night to try to meet. So that'll be November 28th at the Northwest District offices. The next Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting will be held December 5th, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. at the Bel Air School. AMSD Board Meeting, December 7th, 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. at the Cora Education Center. Our next Fridley Public School Board Meeting will be December 18th, Worst Section, starting at 5:30. The Truth and Taxation Meeting occurring at 7:00 p.m., followed by the business meeting at 7:30. Now, will that be here in the High School Media Center still? Okay, because I know we talked about potentially moving it, so I want to make sure that was the case. Also, the Truth and Taxation I mentioned will also be held here on that night at 7:00 p.m. on December 18th. Also, another little personal plug, I'm going to throw my second personal plug in here. The Fridley Alumni Choir will be putting on a free concert at the district auditorium on Sunday, December 2nd. It's a choral concert, free to the public, and I'll be certainly happy to have folks show up for that. Is there anything else from any other members of the board? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Riddle, seconded by Sampson, to adjourn at 8:09. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we are adjourned.